order. First on the agenda, the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we table the minutes because I'm still getting comments both on February 26th and March 4th.
Move second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we table both sets of minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval not required. Plans are on the agenda next. The first is the applicant is Logan and Lisa Huffman for 11 Onawa Lane or Onawa LLC, I'm not sure how it's pronounced, and 5 Onawa LLC to subdivide three lots into two lots located at 3, 5, and 11 Onawa Lane Falmouth. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Michael Boiselli from Falmouth Engineering. I have a plan I can go through with you. Would you like me to do that?
Sure, absolutely.
The applicants have filed an approval not required application because they have plans to do some significant renovations and modifications to the property. They recently acquired the property and have a master plan that includes raising and reconstructing this house. That is currently pending before the Conservation Commission, removing this four-car garage with apartment above, just completely eliminating it, demolishing this existing house and eliminating it. And the goal is to kind of clean up the sort of mishmash of driveways and the way that the landscape is laid out and create two larger lots that would have separation with landscaping, et cetera, between the two. So, the main house here would remain, the main house here would remain, and this garage would remain. And then they would do complete different driveway configurations and landscaping. So, in the end, they're just two separate distinct large residential lots. So, currently, there are three lots. Lot 218, which is this lot bounded by the orange line, and the orange line is proposed to be removed. Lot 245, which currently runs along here, along the water, and then along this orange line, and then around the road, along Onawa Lane, and back to this point and around. So, the concept is to eliminate this part of the property line for 245, and then create a new lot line that's shown here in blue. So that the three lots, the two relatively large lots and the one small lot, end up converting to two large lots. The access to number 11 will continue to be over Onawa. So, the access in frontage exists on Onawa. And the access in frontage for number five will continue to be here. There's a driveway that runs through these two pillars down into the site here. So, they have adequate frontage lot area and lot width in accordance with your zoning, town's zoning by law. That's pretty much it.
Staff comment? Okay. Does anybody on the, Bob?
You said number 11 was going to be razed. It's not R-A-Z-E-D, huh? It's going to be raised.
I'm sorry, R-A-Z-E-D.
Oh, okay.
Demolished, yes, and then reconstructed. There's a plan, a notice of intent application has been filed with the Conservation Commission for that, and there's a hearing on the 19th of March.
Paul?
Mr. Boiselli, you have the four-car garage on lot 244. That's to be eliminated.
Yes.
And up here on lot A, the garage stays. Is the existing ranch house going out as well?
This existing ranch house is going, yes.
Yes, okay. I thought you said...
In fact, I believe it would have to go. If you're doing this, I think you'd be creating a non-conformity because it would be two dwellings on one lot.
But that garage below it will stay?
This is going to continue to stay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Could I have a motion then?
I move the, accept the plan?
Endorse.
Endorse, sorry, what were you?
Been moved and seconded that we endorse the plan as it's been presented to us. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you.
The second A and R, Matthew and Russell and Seiler, equal exchange of 910 square feet of land located at lot 2 and 10 Nashewena Street, Falmouth. Is there anyone here for the applicant? Anybody have any comments or questions on this?
Let's see. Okay.
So, the dotted line?
I'd like to know when this was submitted. I don't have, I have an agenda, but it doesn't say it's been amended. But it's, this is the second A and R, and I don't, I haven't, this is the first time I've seen that, and I'd like to know when it was, when it was brought to the office.
Since it was filed March 7th.
This is the Matthew and Russell and Seiler property?
Right.
Okay, yeah, so it is on the agenda.
I know, it's on, it's on the agenda that's in our package, not on the agenda that I received electronically that was also dated March 11th.
It came in after we emailed out the first, the first agenda. So, it's timely for this agenda, but our email had already sent, we had already emailed out the posted agenda, and then we revised this to add it.
Okay, so this is, this is what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're equal exchange.
Equal exchange of land, right here, parcel A and B, I believe. Yeah.
Parcel A.
So, are you familiar with where the, which is the old lot?
This is, no, this was, right, yeah.
No erosion, no running water down the roadway. The attorney, Brian Garner, has talked with Eladio Gore. This is for item number four. If you need that in writing, we can get that. A determination regarding the creation of lots by -- has to do with including this other landlocked parcel in the subdivision. Mr. Gore has told Brian Garner that he has no problems with it. If we need it in writing, we can get that for you. As far as the installation of septic systems with enhanced nitrogen removal, it's something that I think the applicant will consider. At this moment, they're out of town, so I can't get them -- I can't say definitively that they'll put them in. Certainly, though, we don't want it retroactive to the two existing houses, but certainly they'll consider it for the two new lots if you were to so condition it. That's the presentation. So that's it. I'll take questions.
Okay. Doug?
So, Mr. Bunker, I saw the cross-section that showed that the road was going to have a gravel base, like six inches of compacted subgrade, and then eight-inch gravel base, and then a two-inch stone. Is that still the case after the water line goes in? You'll be doing that?
Well, this is the proposed, yes. We'll put the water line in and rebuild it back. Basically, the water line will go in here, so we're all disturbed from putting in the water line.
Because on another note, I saw it said that, you know, existing roadway to remain. I wasn't really clear if you were going to put the gravel in the hole.
It will -- the full proposed width of 14 feet will be
Like that.
Built to that standard, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
You have a very long list of waivers. I think I got them all. Did you cover all the zones that this property is in? Maybe we heard it the last time, but as opposed, you know, the other overlay districts that are in, could you review that quickly?
It is in, well, it's zoning district RB. Flood zone C, it is in the Coastal Pond Overlay District, West Valmet Harbor. Those are the only ones that's really in. It's not in the Water Resource Protection District, it's not in Zone Two Poliquet Supply, nor in the Wildlife Corridor Overlay District or Endangered Species Habitat.
Thank you. Just for discussion, what do you guys -- I'm not feeling any other way, but what about the D-Nite for the two lots? Anyone have any? That's why I brought up that question, West Valmet Harbor. We're giving them a lot of waivers. You know, we waived just about everything, so what do you -- anybody else have thoughts on that?
Does anybody wish to comment on that? Doug?
I'd like to see them included.
Does anybody else want to comment on that?
I missed what you said, Doug.
I said, "I would like to see the denitrification septic included." It is in the West Valmet Overlay District.
For the two new lots?
For the -- just the two new, right.
Ralph?
Right. Just as a reminder, we have actually required a D-Nite system for one additional dwelling in the past. Not very often, but we have.
West Valmet Harbor is stressed, and every little incremental stressor creates more stress on the harbor. So I definitely would like to see a D-Nite system included.
Yeah, Mr. Bunker?
Yes.
Can you tell me where the flow of the groundwater is on this lot?
No, but I think, well, I can only guess that it's toward the harbor.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily have to be, but I'm guessing. Because as Mr. Fox says, you know, we're getting -- you're asking for a large number of waivers, and a D-Nite system usually works better with the larger number of units participating. And you indicated that you wouldn't probably entertain hooking up to the other homes, but if the people that live in those homes are concerned about West Valmet Harbor, just as we are, I would think that they would consider that. Especially since the four -- if there are two more dwellings going in on that -- on those four lots, that they would be reasonably close to each other.
I think that's asking for too much. I agree. The new construction, when they're breaking the ground anyway, they're going to be putting in a septic system, make it a D-Nite system. To require people to -- you know, unless their system is failing, I see no reason to do that. Now, if you want to put a condition that if any replacement of existing systems, I don't know if we could condition that way, but any replacement of existing systems should be -- I have no problem with that either. But to require somebody to tear up functioning existing systems just seems to be overreaching. That's my opinion.
Anyone else have any comments?
I tend to agree with Jim. If this was just a big open parcel of land, and it was being subdivided into four house lots, we would be requiring an awful lot of -- have other requirements according to the subdivision regulations, and it just seems that we're skirting a lot of them. And, you know, it concerns me a little bit because I hate to set precedent for anybody else coming in. And it just seems like there's an awful lot of waivers in the wind here.
Any other comments? Yes, Ralph?
Not requiring a subdivision to pave the road going into it seems like a real stretch. Mr. Bunker indicated that it would lend, by leaving it as a stone or gravel, that it would lend itself to a rustic or rural atmosphere. However, the town is required to plow both private and town roads. So we're saying, "No, you don't have to pave it," or you're asking, "No, you don't want to pave it," and yet the town has to plow that road, and it's a lot easier to plow a road that is improved and has a hard surface than it is a road that is stone. So I have some issues with that waiver.
I don't believe the town is required to plow because we've put those conditions on other subdivisions, that they have to take care of their own plowing. So I'm
We just looked at a subdivision where somebody did pave a road when they didn't have to, and now they're talking about tearing up the pavement. I think if we had a history of failure of this dirt road or drainage issues on this dirt road, that they could be corrected, I think then we'd be talking about something. But just to say, "We're going to require pavement on a small four-lot subdivision in a very rural area," still a rural area, where the properties as such are not what we would call suburbia, but are kind of old Cape-type properties. That's the ambiance that the people are selling out there. I know this because I used to live out in that part of the town, and that's, you know, to require -- it's not just the expense, but I think it's needless paving. If the town comes in and they tear up some gravel, well, it's up to the owners to replace the gravel. That's the way Cape Codders do things. So I disagree with Ralph on this one, too. I'm sorry.
Marlene, you had a comment?
I just wanted to remind the board that this is a public hearing, so you may want to keep gathering more information from any commenters you want to speak, from your referrals from other town departments, your staff report. Please ask questions if you need more clarification, but as normal course, we'll schedule this at a future agenda before your discussion, where you can debate the merits. But right now, you're in the public hearing stage.
Rich?
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Bunker. Would you please describe the pros and cons of paving versus not paving?
Well, I was going to say that one pro of not paving is that there's less runoff. It actually is better, somewhat better environmentally, and it's not all running off into a catch basin, into a leaching pit, and it can -- the petrochemicals or other things could sit in the surface and perhaps evaporate or be broken down by bacteria, where not just being, you know, put into the -- more directly into the groundwater. Usually, if there's -- if it's not paved, then people aren't going to put salt on the road either, so it is probably less, you know, less maintenance in that respect, less maintenance and less chemicals being used for it. Sometimes you, you know, you might get potholes or something in unpaved roads, but when a paved road starts to break down, then it really starts to break down, and will cost a lot more to fix, you know, failures in a paved road than in an unpaved road. I think here, especially considering partly that it's so flat, I mean, that's one of the major concerns or major reasons why, you know, not paving will work, is water will just sit there and go in slowly rather than running down and accumulating in one location. I'm sure there are other pros and cons, but it's just a couple of them I see.
Does the board have any further questions of Mr. Bunker?
Actually, I have one of Marlene.
Okay.
Is Coastal Pond Overlay District same as a watershed protection area?
It is. Would you like me to go through the staff report? Would that maybe answer some of your questions? And I'll start with that because that is an item on the staff report, so I'll start with that one. It'll go a little out of order. So the Coastal Pond Overlay District is -- those are the areas that drain into those estuaries. So yes, those are the subwatershed. And we're concerned with the estuarine environments rather than the, you know, the open ocean environments in this bylaw. So those are -- so the Coastal Pond Overlay District comes into play for subdivisions of five acres or more, or five or more lots. And what you're -- if you're reading the standards, what we require is a study.
That's what I was looking at.
Right, the harbor has been studied numerous times. So instead of requiring another study as part of a subdivision, the balancing is the denitrification system. So when you're reading your regulations, it doesn't actually say denitrification system anywhere in them, but instead of the study, that is what has been offered traditionally.
Yeah, well, what I was referring to is Ralph's question where it says in 30524-F Drainage, "When land is in a watershed protection area, hydrographic tests may be required to determine the direction of underground water flow."
Yeah, I mean, it's
Excuse me. Could I ask the audience not to be making comments while we're discussing? Could I ask the audience not to be making comments that can be heard?
You can hear me?
Yes, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I mean, technically, we don't have a map that shows what that bylaw is referring to. We do use the Coastal Pond Overlay.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe the applicant has stipulated for purposes of our review that the flow is toward the harbor. So a groundwater study would be gilding the lily. If there was an issue there, well, then we would require it. We stipulated that, so we can assume that.
From what I know of groundwater flow, yes. It is to the harbor.
Do you have a question?
Yes, Paul.
On the staff report, it refers to flood zone. It says, "See Concom referral."
Okay, so why don't I just
Can you explain what that means?
Yeah, let me just go through the staff report. I think that'll help you instead of kind of having you have to ask about it. So it is the Coastal Pond Overlay draining into West Valmet Harbor. Now, for the flood zone, we did receive a referral from Conservation. Now, remember, you're looking at this for the subdivision, so you're concerned with the laying out of the road. The road is not in a flood hazard area, but the Concom is concerned about some of the lot area being in an A-zone. So if this is subdivided and if someone does apply for building permit, then at that point, they would go see the Concom for -- and they're asking that if any structures in the A-zone would need to be elevated one foot above base flood elevation. That's what the referral is about. So it's a later stage in the process. It's not at the subdivision. So the referral, you're fine for the road. We've talked about topography, though it's very flat. The -- so the width alignment and grades, that's where -- that's the item where the travel surface is -- the request has been made that the travel surface be waved down. Your preliminary decision asked for 14 to 16 feet. Do you have the preliminary decision in your packet? I can't remember who gave it to you. Okay, I do have a copy with me in the file if anyone needs to reference it, but that's the 14 to 16 feet was in your preliminary decision from January. Yesterday, we received, yeah, yesterday, we received a memo or a referral, excuse me, from engineering, and I'm not sure if, Tom, if you've had a chance to come in and see this. Okay, so we did get their engineering referral yesterday, and for the width and alignment and grades, they are -- they write, "The proposed plans show that approximately 10-foot wide travel way expanded to 14 feet. This does not meet the town standards for minor streets, which require a 20-foot traveled way. We reviewed the proposed plans with DPW Highway Division, and in the interests of emergency vehicles, snowplows, trash trucks, delivery vehicles, and other large vehicles, we recommend the applicant provide a 20-foot wide travel way. It appears that this right-of-way area is fairly flat and open enough that it should not be an issue in providing this width. The proposed plan shows an expansion of the existing turnaround area. We reviewed the proposed plans with the DPW Highway Division, and in the interest of emergency vehicles, snowplows, trash trucks, delivery vehicles, and other large vehicles, we recommend constructing a dirt cul-de-sac instead. The area, again, appears to be open and level enough that there should not be an issue providing this." So you're -- so engineering is recommending 20-foot travel surface. And I think it was Pat who mentioned before, you have had a past practices where if you do grant these waivers, you place a note, a condition that a note placed on the plan that the town will not provide trash pickup and snow plowing services. You've done that in the past. And engineering also requests that the applicant be required to add a note to the plans that this roadway will not be eligible for town acceptance unless built to town standards out to the full right-of-way limits. So you have to balance all of these concerns and decide what you want to do. But that's what engineering is recommending for the width. We've discussed the fact that the cross-section is showing stone, and the fire department referral for the turnaround, we also have that fat. And the fire and rescue department requests that they maintain a 14-foot wide road surface with a four-foot clearance on each side of the road. Additionally, we request the standard Town of Valmet 18-foot wide by 80-foot long T-turnaround at the end of the road. The plans show the addition of a fire hydrant on the road, which the fire and rescue department would also request. The -- I think the road is about 400 feet, so we're not above the 500-foot dead-end threshold, so that's not an issue. They are proposing the water main with hydrant, as Mr. Bunker indicated. The preliminary decision does recommend denitrifying systems for the two new lots. Now, one thing I want you to be clear about here is that this is not a cluster subdivision, so there's no common area. So we would not be looking at a system that serves more than one house. You'd be looking at individual systems on individual lots. So sometimes we talk about denitrifying systems that are common and serve the entire subdivision, and those are in your cluster subdivisions. These would be individuals. The drainage, the drainage system is -- they're proposing to use the existing catch basins and not provide any further drainage. And there is a drainage easement that is shown on the plan, and engineering did want to know if that's a new easement or a modification of the existing easement. So that might be something you might want to clarify. And the waiver, we do have the waivers in writing in the file if you need to come -- if you need to review those.
Question from Marlene. What do you do, what are we supposed to do when we get a contradiction between engineering and the fire department? Especially when engineering is saying this is what the fire department needs, but the fire department says they want the T-turnaround, and engineering says they want the cul-de-sac. What do you do?
You have to make, you have to decide what's best for this particular case. Engineering talked to the Highway Division. They did not talk to fire. So fire is writing to you directly, and engineering is writing to you on behalf of the DPW.
So we could say 20 feet wide with a T?
You can waive your standards to any point you feel is necessary. So they're telling you, you know, they're giving you some things to think about, and you are at liberty to decide.
Okay. Well, the bigger vehicles that would go in there would be the fire trucks.
Right.
So if they say they need
Right.
It would take pleasant about the turnaround, but the width issue might well be determined by the other departments.
And you can balance that by requiring notes that we don't plow, that the town doesn't plow those streets. You can look at those options.
Could I just make a comment about the width? You can imagine, like I say, this road here is 10 feet wide. If you can imagine, if you've been there, imagine it double the width that it is now. I mean, it's a lot for that area. And I just measured off of our plan there. Chase Road itself is only 17 to 18 feet wide. So it's a really don't need 20 feet. You don't need this wider than Chase Road itself. And so how much narrower are you going to allow it to wave is up to you.
Question for Mr. Bunker. Is Chase Road public, private?
It's public.
Okay. Are there other questions from the board? Okay, at this point, then, I'm going to move to the public. If anybody has questions or comments, please go up to the podium and state your name.
Just trying to remember.
Yes, please. And you do have to state your name because we're being televised, and people want to know who you are.
My name is William Senate, and I'm in a butter at 734 West Valmet Highway. And a couple of things, I was concerned that there were -- what is the purpose of this subdivision? I mean, it seems to not be conforming, and it seems to require a lot of waivers. So it does raise the obvious question, why? Why are we doing this? Why is the applicant applying for this? Is it a profiteering motive? Is he trying to accomplish a home for, you know, an invalid child? What is the purpose of this?
Our board does not know.
You don't know?
That's outside of our purview to know that.
Who has the authority? He's asking for a lot of waivers. Who grants the waivers? Just this room right here?
The planning board does.
Now, if somebody wants to challenge the waivers, how would they go about that?
Hire a lawyer.
Yeah, I guess.
I mean, if we
If you don't like the decision, then take it to court.
Okay, and then you go to Land Court, and then you sort of hold the whole thing up?
Yeah, we make a decision in regard to the waivers that are requested. Some we will grant, some we won't grant, and it's part of the whole picture that we're taking into account.
When will we know how you ruled on that? When do we know what you granted?
They'll be published in the paper. Madam Chairman?
Yes.
We're going to have a discussion on this. This is a hearing.
Uh huh.
We're listening right now.
Uh huh.
And I have things that I'd like to express, but I'm not. I'm waiting till we have our discussion.
Right, discussion.
And then, when we have our discussion, we can engage those things. But right now, we're listening to testimony. We'll hear your question.
Okay. When is, when do you have this discussion?
The process is that if we feel we have enough information that has been given to us tonight, we can close the hearing tonight. If we wish to keep it open, we can do so fully open or for written comment only. So first of all, our discussion does not take place until this informational hearing is closed. Then we have our discussion amongst the planning board members and reach our decision. And you're welcome to be here. You'll know what our decision is. I do not know when this will be brought up again for that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Rich.
Ms. Senate, I believe that as in a butter, you would get notice. No, you won't. So you'd have to follow what we're doing. However, as point of information, you're coming in here as in a butter, and you have the right to object and to, you know, but as point of information, I would like to know what your specific objections to the waivers are.
What my -- well, I have a number of them, but my main one is cul-de-sacs. That I come from a town that will not allow cul-de-sacs. They think they're unsafe. They do not allow for egress of emergency vehicles and access of emergency vehicles. And here, somebody's coming along, "Hey, I want a cul-de-sac." I mean, why would this, why would you entertain giving somebody a cul-de-sac?
Okay, so let me be clear with what your objection is, that you are not objecting pour-se as in a butter with impacts on your property. You're objecting generally.
I don't want to see the mayhem that may occur if it doesn't work because it'll be in my backyard.
Well, it'll be in your backyard, but separated by
Why do you have to know why I object?
I want to know what impacts on your property, because that would be something we would take very seriously, what impacts on your property that you perceive that this would have negative to your specific property.
That's her name.
Maybe she went
I mean, I'm speaking for my neighbors in the town.
Hotels seem to be speaking for themselves. So our house is on 734 West Valmet Highway, which is a pretty busy road, as you know. And so the one, you know, peace and quiet we have is the backyard, and now we're picturing a development in the backyard. And it's a pretty, you know, bucolic area in the back, and so the concerns I have is our house is up high. Instead of looking down on a stone wall and rabbits, we're now going to look at rooftops like we would have in the city. So it's a big change. We don't own the property, so clearly we can't totally control what's there, but we do have concerns. You see so much change in West Valmet. Every, you know, couple of months, you come down, and there's more and more development. And so I think it's natural to ask, like, you know, why this is such an important thing that we grant room for a couple more houses down there. So I think that's kind of where we're coming from, and just the nature of the place is changing. And so I think it's not inappropriate to ask why, like, why is it so necessary?
Certainly not.
So, you know, it's a beautiful area. I would like to see it, you know, stay that way. And I guess the least we would be hoping for is that we'd have some kind of a screen, some abiviti or something so that we, you know. We looked at a tennis court for 15 years, which was okay, even though it was orange and blue, you know, but it's a little different when you're looking at a whole development.
So what you're asking for, then, is to have some screening when we reach our final decision.
I think, and, you know, it gets to a slippery slope because when they put the first house in there, they had to be granted waivers because they didn't have, I think it was frontage. There was no frontage, and that's when they put the little dirt road in. And now, all of a sudden, there's going to be multiple houses on this little dirt road. So, you know, we didn't have any objection. I, you know, I like my neighbors, and that's fine, but, you know, it's one thing to put one house in, and now we're talking about all the the nitrogen problems. And so you just have to ask, when does it stop?
The underlying zoning, that's what you have to look at.
Mm-hmm.
And if they meet the underlying zoning, then they're allowed to do it within certain parameters that are controlled, again, by our bylaws.
Right.
With all the waivers, does that make the underlining zoning?
Yeah, I guess the question is, that does seem like a long list of waivers.
I think we're considering the waivers would be more acceptable to the neighborhood. I don't think the neighborhood wants a great big right-of-way or a paved street. So by right, they could do this.
Right.
We can't, you know, they have a right to do this. It seems this is a by right. It meets all our subdivision bylaws. So when we're wavering, we're trying to temper things and make it work.
Right.
I don't think our waivers are working in your direction, but that's the point.
Doug, you wanted to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, you made a lot of good points about what your concerns are. You don't really have to have a lawyer. If you can put your thoughts together and come up with what your concerns are...
It's just the change of the look, I think, which is what everybody cares about.
Right. And it doesn't have to be right this second here tonight. You can write it in a letter and submit it to us.
Well, the other question I have is, so I heard that there's discussions, and then how do we keep up to date with what's happening? I mean, we're not going to get notices, and we don't get the paper every week. So how would we stay in the loop?
The planning board agenda is on the town website.
Okay, great. And that's published how often?
When do you submit it to the website?
The Thursday or Friday before the meeting, so...
And did the meetings happen? The meeting date is published, I assume?
It's always on a Tuesday.
Always on a Tuesday.
So if you look, Thursday, Friday, the agenda... Definitely Friday. It will be on the town website.
So you got lucky making it here tonight.
We're televised. You're on television now.
It's too late now. I'm glad you didn't tell me before. All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have a comment? Okay.
So we could...
What?
Just one comment.
Yes.
So what I heard is that the concern is that there's essentially a small housing development going in behind their property.
And their property is right here.
Right above the tennis court.
Right above the tennis court.
Yeah.
Okay? The one right above the tennis court.
It's one of these. I think it was C. Yeah, right there.
Yeah. Okay. Now...
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Bunker, what could you do with this property without the waivers that you're seeking? By right?
Without the waivers? Well, if we put in a subdivision, we could still have the same four lots and put in more pavement, streetlights, sidewalk, whatever utility. There may be a more intense development than what we're proposing now, trying to keep it softer.
How would that be any better for the view of the Senate?
Well...
How would it be any worse?
I wouldn't say it'd be better.
If you slow it down, I'll tell you.
So the point that Mr. Bunker is trying to make is that by asking these waivers, he's trying to keep it more bucolic so that you don't have the streetlights to look at. You don't have the paving to look at.
Yeah, less impact.
Mm-hmm. And by putting in a dirt road, you don't have the runoff. It goes through. It's a pervious surface.
Madam Chair, let's put it this way. Basically, if he comes in with, by right, he shows us all the dimensions, which is shown here, and he can get that subdivision, period. But if we insist on all our waivers, it's going to be much bigger of a deal than what he wants to do. So the bottom line is, that's going to go in there. And there's nothing we could say, even if, you know, we really wanted to say no, we couldn't. But we could say yes to the things that are going to soften the impacts.
He may not want to make the investment in the 20-foot road, though. That's...
Well, we all would say that for money, but...
You might just stop him right there.
Well, no, because he's got the place with the 20-foot road.
Okay. Let's... we've got to stop the conversation.
Okay.
Back and forth, okay?
Yeah.
If the board feels that we have gotten sufficient information tonight, if you have no further questions, we...
We haven't really finished the staff report.
I thought we had.
I...
Staff report?
If you have more questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I went through the points that I think were notable.
Okay, sorry, excuse me.
No, that's okay. If you have more and you want to keep the hearing...
I just didn't think she was done.
Open. Yes, Rich.
I was going to say, do you want to keep it open for written comments?
We could keep it open. We could close the hearing tonight, keep it open for written comments.
Well, if the folks wanted that...
If the Senate wished to.
I'd like to make sure.
Okay. Then what should rather? You want to keep, close the hearing tonight, but keep it open for written comments?
I agree.
Have you gotten enough information? Do you feel that you need to have more?
No, I think the intent has been clarified for me.
Okay.
And the information regarding the waivers, I think, is more clear.
Okay. A two-week period for written comments?
I'll move it.
Good.
Okay, you're moving that we close the hearing tonight, keep it open for written comments for a period of two weeks?
Two weeks, yes.
And that we take it under advisement?
One second.
He's trying to get you...
Before you go, I have one question. In some further survey that we've done, I realized I have to make some minor adjustments for the lot line. Would that fall under the written comment?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as it's minor.
Then everything was still conform?
Yeah, okay. Is everybody okay with this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then, no further discussion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I've called a few of you on this so it wouldn't come out of the blue as a surprise. You probably remember Sylvia Sulkin, who was here, who described the study that this refers to, the housing demand study. I want to make it very clear that this has been expanded, not just to be an affordable housing study, but a housing need study for all the demographics of the community. A citizens advisory committee is being set up with representatives from five different boards. And I always forget the fifth one, so you're going to have to help me out with this. Planning board, obviously. The EDIC, the housing trust, human services, and it's the fifth one I always forget.
The Affordable Housing Committee.
Affordable Housing Committee, okay. So what we are doing tonight is looking for a representative from the planning board to take part in this committee. There will... the responsibilities... well, I should start. This will start about the first part of April, and it will be an approximate four-month commitment. The study should be done in four months. This is what the consulting firm has asked for. The... we will... whoever it is will have to review the draft documents that are produced. So there will be information. But you are not going to be producing the documents. You will simply be reviewing them and commenting, like we do on a lot of other things. There will be a four-meeting commitment. And does... is it like once a month, Marlene, or what? Do we know?
Well, it'll be at least a four-meeting commitment. There may need to be additional ones. And it'll be, depending on who... depending on the five people who are serving, we'll, you know, we'll obviously do our best to make it convenient for everyone. It won't be on a set schedule. It'll be on an as-needed basis.
Because that is part of the problem, if you will. We do not know when these meetings are going to take place. So those who have day jobs may be excluded from this unless the meetings take place in the evening.
We'll do our best to be flexible, but it'll be up to the five, the majority of the five people.
Mm-hmm. So is there anybody who would like to be the planning board representative to this committee?
As much as I would love to, I'm already sitting on six committees or boards at this point.
That's what I know. That's what I know. Ralph?
Well, I'd like to ask Marlene some questions.
Sure.
Will you be the staff liaison to this committee?
Yes, so I'll be managing the contract.
Okay. Will the committee have to elect a chairperson, and will the minutes be taken, and will it be under the open meeting law?
The meetings will be open, but it's not going to be... it's not an appointed committee, so the short answer is no. It's being set up through this contract as a steering committee. But we will still do an agenda and, you know, post it and have it open, even though it's not technically necessary.
And village? No?
I mean, there'll be meeting notes.
Meeting notes, okay.
But it's not... it's an ad hoc steering committee, so you don't need to worry about chairman and secretary and kind of those formalities. It's a group set up specifically for this contract, but not appointed. We're just asking for volunteers.
Right. So... but the public will be at least advised of when these meetings are going to occur and would not be excluded?
No, they would not. They wouldn't have a vote, or...
Right.
But they could always... the public could always come and listen and watch and see what's going on.
Who decided on the five entities that were... that will be participating in the committee?
It was myself and the Affordable Housing Committee. We talked about who, you know, who are the people that would be most helpful in getting the goals of this study met.
The CPC, I believe, recommended the town meeting quite a while back to fund this study. Is that correct?
No.
This is not... is not the case?
No, it was not a town meeting article. It was a trust fund. So the Board of Selectmen voted the funds.
Okay. Came out of the Falmouth Housing...
Trust Fund.
Trust Fund.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it. Okay, that's great. And this is the same person who originally started the study, but then changed organizations and then... but is still staying with it? Okay. Yeah, okay.
I was hoping Ralph was going to step up and say, I'll take it.
He may.
So I'm not... I have some questions. I don't know if anybody else has any...
I will if he won't.
Well, I would just as soon let people think about it because... and we don't have to do this until our next meeting. It doesn't start until April 1st.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're bringing it up to you. I'm not, like, pressuring you to make decisions tonight.
Because we all have to think about it, and, you know... I mean, I could do it too, but I want people...
Anyone could do it.
...to think about it and think about how it fits into their desires and their schedule and so on. It doesn't appear... with a four-month commitment, it does not appear to be overwhelming. It's not going on for a year or two or whatever, as many things do. Yes, Paul?
Just a question. You had mentioned the makeup of the committee is the planning board, EDIC, human services, affordable housing, and what was the fifth one?
The Falmouth Housing Trust.
I'm sorry?
The Falm...
Housing Trust. And Sylvia Sulkin, who was here before, where is she in this group?
She... no one has voted... none of those boards have voted their representatives yet, but I'm pretty confident that the Affordable Housing Committee will vote her as their representative to this steering committee.
Well, she's excellent.
Yeah.
So there's no qualms about working with Sylvia. No question about that.
I didn't think she was on the Affordable Housing Committee anymore.
She's not, but she's chairing their roundtable subcommittee, and they can vote her as their representative.
You don't have to... remember, we've done that before. We've voted other people who have shown interest as a representative for other things. So I wanted to introduce this tonight because it's important, and it has to be done well, and whoever does it has to have the time to do it. Okay? Okay. So we move on. If I can find the correspondence... ah, there it is. No. If you remember last week with the Sun Elite, Mr. Ahmet wanted us to extend the time, but he needed to give us a written request for it. And I have it in the... so it's a little bit backwards, but we do have the written request. Dear Brian, I represent Sun Elite LLC, applicant for a modification of definitive plan with respect to the Sunrise Estate subdivision. On behalf of the applicant, I hereby grant an extension of the time within which the planning board is required to make and file a decision in the referenced matter until April 16, 2014. So we simply have to have a motion that accepts the request for the extension.
I'll move it.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded. Any further comments on that?
Go ahead.
Well, I'd like to make a comment. When we bring this up again, it would be nice to have a report on the status of the punch list items. Punch lists are supposed to be done the end of last year, and we're talking about it. But now, at a public hearing, we're only referring to the drainage and the sidewalk.
Because that's all it is.
But there is an element, and we should be able to get a update of the punch list items in three months after the deadline.
Okay.
It's been extended to April 16.
April 16.
Wow. Because I thought we were going to take it up March 25.
25. Yeah, so this is time to get everything written up in case you... it's time... because town meeting's in there, remember? So if you need another meeting, we need to get you past town meeting, and we need to make sure there's time to file everything with the town clerk.
Okay. And also remember that just because that's the deadline, we can render a decision sooner than that. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Madam Chair?
Jim?
Oh, Jim, you had your hand up.
The same issue as Paul. I just want to... before we had... we were always having hearings, we weren't able to discuss what went on back in October.